So let's start with the first special session of Safe AI. It's Encore. And the main chair of this session is Lucas Cordiero from the University of Manchester. So Lucas, the floor is yours.
Okay, so can you can you see my slides?
Yes, I think your slides are online.
Okay, okay, good. So yeah, thank you, thank you Gabriela. So I welcome everyone. So we are delighted to have you join us at the Encore our special session as part of the TPO AI workshop on artificial intelligence and safety. This special session is funded by the EPSSE project that's called Encore and change conceptual guarding of neuroarchitectures. So that project is hosted at the University of Manchester and the University of Liverpool in the UK. So Encore brings together over fifteen researchers from academia, energy and health sector, so that we can address the challenge and opportunities of explainable and verifiable AI. So it's a three year, it's a three and a half product, and we have just concluded the first year of Encore. So our vision of Encore, you want to build explainable and fully verifiable learning based systems that are safe. So the user of the learning based system should not be dangerous or likely to be harmed, should be transparent, so should be able, should have the ability to request meaningful explanation of distinct status. And also robust, right? So that learning based system is unlikely to break, for example, fail during an adversarial example. We have have three main challenges that you can see in Encore. From this safety verification perspective, one of the main challenges is to trade off between soundness and completeness to verify large scale learning based systems, including both, right? Its model and also the implementation. For example, to achieve soundness, so requires reasoning about all executions, right, of a model or implementation of the learning based systems, which is usually a very large and infinite number. And also achieving completeness, for example, can be done by from actual concrete evaluations, right, of a model or the implementation of that learning based systems. And to trade off both soundness and completeness to achieve scalability is a main challenge here. So the other challenge that we also face in Encore is about the representational gap that you have between the neuro and symbolic. So we have seen the latest deep learning models for detection, classification, that they have achieved, right? So unprecedented performance of a classical machine learning algorithms. But as you know, the DL methods, models, they are actually black box methods, right? That are hard to debug. It's hard, quite difficult to interpret and certify. So then DL alone cannot provide, well, it's difficult to provide explanation that can be validated by a no technical audience, right? And in contrast, so symbolic AI systems that they convert concepts into rules or symbols, right, such as pology graphs, which makes our life much easier to explain, right? And then here in Encore, so then we have that that challenge that you want to develop an explainable neuro symbolic learning methodology that confuse both, right, the deep learning and symbolic representations. And the last one is later to security, right? So you want to trade off between privacy, privacy protection and transparency and accountability. So then we ask questions here, for example, how much information, for example, you can hide from the stakeholder? At the same time, you make question like, how much data can you provide to stakeholder, right? So that they they can provide a meaningful explanation of the system's status at a specific moment or specific period, or even the general principles of decisions. So then our objective here is to develop, evaluate methods, algorithms and tools to build explainable and fully verifiable learning based systems that are safe, transparent and robust. That's our main objective. So then the objective of this special session, you want to establish new partnerships and collaborations with the Safe AI community. And then you want this to lead the discussion concerning the challenge and the opportunities, right? Also tackle those main three main challenges that I have stated here in the previous slides to achieve explainable and verifiable learning based systems. And then also to have as an outcome here of this special session, so you want to create a benefits roadmap in collaboration with the Safe AI community, so that it can guide our research for the remaining years of Encore. So if you get interested in collaborating with our research team, so you can get in contact with me. So I'm the principal investigator of Encore. So then if you're interested, please do send a message. And then I will put in contact with our colleagues of Encore. So that's the Encore team. You can see that the colleagues at the top here, so they are the investigators of Encore. So we have Andre Freitas and Kevin Brown, that they cover the part of machine learning, expandable AI. So we have Mustafa that works on data privacy and security. I have Michal Hahn, who works on the computer architecture. And Shelby Huang, who works on the intersection of machine learning, formal verification and robotics. It's me, Lucas Cordiero. So my research lies in the field of program analysis, program synthesis, software testing and security. And here at the bottom, so we have our postdoctoral researchers, that's Eduardo Manino, Weidong, Danilo Carvalho and Julia Raza Nova. And we also have one position, one position open in our team. So my colleague Mustafa is going to talk a little bit about that role later during his presentation. In terms of the partners, Encore is hosted at the University of Manchester and the University of Liverpool. So we have one industrial partner that's Uber Chen, that works on the energy sector, and one clinical partner that's Research Cancer UK. And the product is funded by the Engineering and Physical Science Research Council in the UK. So then in terms of the proposed research, as you can see here, that have those three main components of the case studies, neuro symbolic safe framework and the fully verified intelligent systems. Here the idea of Encore, I want to address that fundamental research problem to ensure the security of new enabled components. And then he wants to consider, right, the entire lifecycle that goes from the development to deployment. And then he believes that solving this problem has a far, right, reaching back to own areas such as health and energy that are our industrial and clinical partner. And so in that that particular domain, so you have, they heavily depend in that area on secure and trusted software components that can meet safety requirements, right? And then what want to do here in Encore is to pioneer the dialogue, the interdisciplinary dialogue between explainable AI and formal verification, right? In particular, want to deliver that saving guard for neuro basic textures that can contribute, for example, with a full stack symbolic verification, with methods, techniques, algorithms for explainability and interpretability. And also want our techniques to scale for large learning based systems, right? And then that particular domain, so you want to systematically combining contemporary symbolic methods for explaining, interpreting and verify neural representations. So then what talks today, we start here with Eduardo Manino, who is going to talk about verifying quantized neural networks using a Smithy based model checking. That's part of the work package that's called verifying secured embedded software. Then the next talk is going to be given by Andre Freitas on explainability and inference controls. And that's part of the work package called explainable neuro symbolic safe one framework. Then we have the talk to be given by Weidong on safety verification of deep reinforcement learning as part of the work package on symbolic verification framework for AI. And finally, the talks here related to the product, so we have one by Mustafa on privacy friendly energy consumption prediction, real case studies. So here is the Encore website that can check our research, what have done publications, awards that have so far about the product. And you are very pleased as well to have an invited talk in this session from Matthias Lashner from IST Austria. So Matthias, a final year PhD student, work on the intersection between formal verification, machine learning, robotics, and is going to talk about his recent work on verifying the safety of closed loop stochastic systems of neural network control policies. So that's the the program that have here today. So I'm going to invite my colleague Eduardo Manino to start with the talks of this special session.
Thank you, Lucas. Try and share my screen with my slides, and I hope everybody can hear me well. Here we are. So as Lucas said, in Encore, we have a bit of a full stack problem in the sense that we are looking at the same problem at different levels of abstraction. This particular work will look at the very low level approach to the problem. And it's a collaboration, not just with Encore and the University of Manchester, but with some colleagues from Brazil, from the University of Massachusetts. So as a machine learning researcher, I tend to think of neural networks as some ideal mathematical function. From the machine learning community, there's a lot of talk about general approximators, extrapolation, interpolation. But in this community, I feel many of you will agree with me that in the end, we're going to deploy these neural networks. And so what it is actually being executed on our computer is some software. Now, of course, software is working on an underlying hardware. I'm not going to talk about the hardware in this presentation. But already, just looking at the software, we are having some problems in the sense that our software implementation of neural network is not identical to what the idealized mathematical function should be doing. And specifically, we have a lot of non-idealities regarding the arithmetic way. Even floating point, which is regarded in machine learning as a good approximation of real arithmetic, is still quantized, cannot represent all possible values. And of course, as we start deploying neural networks on low power devices, then we have to deal with fixed point and integer arithmetics and potentially approximate activation functions, especially if they include transcendental functions. And the problem of verifying a neural network, given a specification, as we look at this quantized neural networks becomes harder, at least in the worst case. And then, of course, as we look at the software implementation, we have even more non-idealities that come from memory models, concurrency problems and potential overflows and underflows. So just to give you an example of what happening, so and give us a motivation that we cannot ignore the problem. Here is a very simple neural network trained on iris dataset, has around a hundred neurons, so very small for machine learning standards. And yet, as we change the number of bits we are using in our fixed point representation, the safety of the neural network changes. In each row, you have a different specification, and you can see that there's not even a monotonic relationship between the number of bits, the precision we are using and the safety of it. So clearly, as we deploy a neural net, we need to check if it is still safe at the level of software implementation. So let me give you a brief overview of what literature there is. So of course, there's been a lot of effort in verifying your networks at the ideal mathematical model level. There's a competition now, it's in its second, its second year at BNN comp. And we have several tools that are able to prove or disprove the safety of a neural network as an ideal mathematical function. If we step down to the software implementation, though, research becomes a bit more sparse and especially becomes sparse because the present efforts tend to focus on specific neural networks, for example, with specific activation functions, or they focus only on the concurrency, for example, of GPUs implementation of neural networks, or some fuzz testing of the software implementation. So what is our goal as Encore is to have a general tool that can verify all sorts of implementation of neural networks, so floating points, fixed points, integer binary mathematics, and of course, supporting all activation functions, not just exist today, but potentially architectures that will come up in the future, since machine learning is a field that is very rapidly expanding. So the main idea is to use established techniques in the software model checking. Why? Because in the end, as we had already today, machine learning is software. And and so if we can leverage those techniques, then we can apply them straight away to machine learning. But how do they work? Well, they work by encoding the verification problem as a satisfiability problem. I will give you a bit more details on this. So imagine we have a piece of code, in this case, C. This piece of code is implementing a neural network, and it is decorated with the specification, what we want, or we expect the system to be doing. So we'll have some specification on the input, the precondition in these examples, just some Boolean variables, and then a postcondition with an assert that tells us what we expect in the output. And state of the art techniques in software model checking are able to take this code, normalize it in an aesthetic single assignment pool, then do simplification, but cut away all the statements that are not relevant for the specification, and then encode it in a logical formula. Now, logical formula here is not Boolean formula, is satisfiability model theory, which is a fragment of first order logic, so it's a bit more powerful and it's more summarized. And then this formula can be verified using an artificial solver. So this is standard software model checking. What can we do more, since we know that this is not just software, but this is actually implemented on neural net? So the first thing is that we can try and speed up the verification by manipulating the activation functions. The bigger problem is known piecewise linear activation function. Anything that is piecewise linear can be easily encoded with some if then else operators, but we want to avoid computing nonlinear functions, because this slows down the verification process a lot. What we suggest is to just replace them with lookup tables, especially since we are in a quantizer presentation, we can match the number of entries of these lookup tables with the underlying quantization of the arithmetic and not lose any precision. Note that this technique is also used to to do inference, not just for the verification, but to do inference, and it's been traditionally used in digital signal processing. The second thing we can do, and this is interesting for Encore, because it talks to a higher level of abstraction, we can borrow techniques from the verification of ideal neural networks and apply them to the software verification. And one of them is to compute abstractions of the original neural network, especially intervals. We can always bound the value of each neuron, and this cuts the search space quite a lot. Note that this only helps with proving the neural networks are safe. When we are looking for a counter example, then we may end up with a more difficult problem. So just as an idea, I said that as we stop looking at the ideal mathematical model, but and we go down to the software level, the complexity of the problem is higher. But that's the theoretical worst case complexity. How does it bear in practice? So this is a comparison against two tools that work at this ideal level, when it's taboo and when it's nearified. And as you see from the graphs, the performance of our tool, even though we are supposedly solving a more complicated problem, is on par with them, which give us some hope that verifying the actual implementation of your network is in practice doable and not more computationally expensive than the idealized version of it. So I will conclude my talk with some points. Remember that your nexus will be implemented in software and will be executed by a finite arithmetic computer. So we need to check if these finite arithmetic effects are destroying the safety of the neural net. And of course, the theoretical result is that this is a more complex task to verify, but in practice, we observe similar performance. So we have a tool, we have a software tool that we can, you can download and you can play around. I give the link to the short paper that explains how it works, but there is a GitHub link you can just download. And of course, more results and more explanations of what we are doing is in our preprint journal paper. Here's the link on archive, and I thank you, and I'm more than happy to answer your question.
Okay, so yeah, thank you very much, Eduardo, for this talk. So we have one question from Mauricio. He asked the following question: Is there an example for a real life system saved issue due to quantization?
So as you saw, it's pretty easy to say by yourself, as soon as you have a quantized system that you can change the quantization level, specifications can become randomly safe or unsafe. This is what we checked in our research. There is evidence that this is happening, so 2019 paper about neural networks deployed in TensorFlow, this is floating point. So the ones you are actually doing, if you're doing basic machine learning and training something on Keras and TensorFlow and just executing, they figure out that sometimes it will produce some not a numbers. And and this problem of not destroying the neural network as you deploy the quantized quantized versions of it is is a classic problem in the machine learning community. It's just that the classic machine learning community just sees it as a problem of not destroying the accuracy. But accuracy is not enough, because it's an average case measure. Here, with verification, we are making sure that the worst case never happens.
Okay, so thank you, Eduardo. So Mauricio, if you still have further questions, yeah, you can post in the chat. So we have a question from the booth. How do you determine the system is safe or not safe? For example, for the ID's dataset?
Yes, so here we are running on the assumption that a user comes with a neural network, implemented in code, of course, and a specification. So this is something in the previous talk, maybe they will come at me and shelter me, because this, we cannot assume this, but this is the assumption is being made by the verification community so far, is that the user can provide a specification of what they want the system to do. And then our tool just encodes both the neural network and the specification as a single logical formula and checks the satisfiability.
Okay, good. Do you have further questions? No? Okay. So I want to thank Eduardo very much for his talk. And then I'm going to invite my colleague Andre Freitas, who is going to talk about explainability and inference controls.
Perfect. Hope you can see my screen and hear me well.
So I can hear you well. It's still for me, it's still loading your
Yeah.
screen. Now it works, Andrea.
Perfect. So welcome, everybody. This is a very brief overview of the research agenda that we have behind the Encore project on explainability and inference controls. And we have a particular emphasis on Encore on scenarios that is focusing on natural language processing. So a lot of what I'm going to talk about here is going to emphasize natural language processing application. So this is the team behind the work that's going to be presented here. And I would like to start with a motivational scenario, which is inspired by one of the scenarios that Lucas mentioned, which is cancer research. So when we are doing inference related to cancer research,
Andrea, sorry for interrupt you, Andrea. It's still on the first slide. I don't know if you have a device it, yeah, on the presentation, but still on the first slide.
Yes, I think there is a connection problem. I would just maybe
That's fine.
Is it changing or not? Still in the first slide?
Oh, now it move it, yeah. There's an expert level scientific interference and explanation. Thank you.
Perfect. Sorry if there is a lag here. So in the context of natural language processing, we can frame a task called textual entailing. And here is a variation of that task, where, given that we have a certain claim, we can assign a supporting explanation for that claim, right? And this reflects, for example, an expert level type of inference, in this case, in cancer research. Here we have a certain scientific claim that BRCA2 promotes the joining of undamaged homologous repair by difficult to parse if you're not an expert molecules via RAD51 homolog one in humans. And here we have the reasoning that an expert would be able to do if they are, if they need to justify what's the biology behind that statement, if that's true or false, right? That's inside an LP is defined as a natural language inference type of problem, a textual entainment type of problem. And this is light variation that focuses on the explainability side of it. So in the context of Encore, we'd like to enable that expert level type of inference and to enable that expert type of inference, we need to work with more precise inference controls. At this point, if we think about scientific inference in state of the art in LP, most of the type of natural language inference is going to be high school level type of scientific inference. And what we are trying to achieve in the context of Encore is to promote more controlled, better controlled, higher quality and more complex scientific inference. And that's a archetypal example. So typically, this is going to be framed in a scenario where we may have maybe possibly billions of facts that needs to support or attack that statement. And the real inference behind the scenes tend to be even more complex, right? So that's an example of the types of linguistic objects that we are dealing in the context of when you're talking about controlling inference. So what are the strategies that we are attacking this complex problem in the context of Encore? So in terms of Encore, what we define as controlled inference can be decomposed into some pillars, two pillars focusing on the intervention, how do you make these models more controlled in terms of their inference properties? And by inference properties, I'm focusing on this natural language inference types of scenarios, right? And then two pillars based on the observation and the testing and the assessment of these properties. And we're going to talk very briefly about this different pillars, strategic pillars, which defines our perspective of controlling inference. So if we just zoom in into one of the hops that we need to cross, right, from the premises that we have, leading to the conclusion, the idea of a natural language inference model is a model that will compute that entailment, right? Is this, is this the case or not, right? And in this context, in natural language processing, we call this multi-hop inference problem. And the way that we attack this is trying to understand and elicit, what do we mean by inference, right? So how do we encode and how do we constrain some properties of this inference? And we start by trying to understand what is this type of inference? And that's a particular type of inference called abductive inference, if we go from the direction of the conclusion to the premises, and what are the expected properties of these inferences? And what do we mean by controlling this inference? So one way that we can establish these controls is trying to decompose these linguistic objects, which you can see as a stream of tokens, a sequence of tokens, into more well-defined linguistic objects. So we can start by chunking the sentences and by establishing, for example, semantic role So we can start by chunking the sentences and by establishing, for example, semantic role label type of encodings for the sentence. And that's one part that we can overlay some semantic encoding for this sentence, for this object, right? So that's one constraint that we can start to impose at a sentence level. It's a kind of semantic representation of the sentence. So that's one possible type of encoding. And by doing that and by trying to then train a model in the natural language processing, this would be typically a transformer-based model. We start to approximate our model into the symbolic space, right? We start to operate at this neuro-symbolic interface. So just to talk a little bit about some of these inference properties that we would have using a simpler inference type of example. If we look into a example of an explanation-based inference out of this hypothesis, we can split that into multiple components, right? We can look, for example, that some of the factors that are going to be used to justify this claim are going to be abstraction types of facts. They're just providing definitions, for example. And we have some core unification facts behind that, right? So this is really the scientific laws that allow the integration of this different piece of definition into that. And that's the core of the explanation. And that's quite challenging to encode because as we move into directional abstraction, the amount of lexical overlap that we have with the initial hypothesis reduces, right? So we are going the direction of abstraction. So the goal here is to develop models that are capable of encoding this level of scientific abstract scientific inference. And some of the strategies that we're doing to do that is trying to essentially elicit what are the steps of inference that happens, what types of explanation components do we have? Are this core explanatory effects, are these definitions? So just trying to classify the components of an explanation. And then within these components in the sentence, trying to overlay semantic attributes. This is the essence of framing the semantic controls. And the expectation is with that, we start to go from the pure, let's say, simpler, direct vector-based type of representation that are common on embeddings into something that we have more control of the semantics. And we approach the type of symbolic reasoning that we expect these models to have to deliver more abstract inference. So that's an example of a natural language inference solver that we have recently built. And that essentially mixes these types of abstract constraints with embedding, sentence-level embeddings, transformer-based embeddings. And the idea of these models is that they can deliver better abstraction, but they are also more efficient from the point of view of the parameterization that you have. And this confirmed empirically. So another strategy that we have been explored, and I think quite successfully, to try to make these models again to operate in a quasi-symbolic space and be more transparent as well, is exploring this entanglement for natural language. And the challenge here is to cope with discrete generative factors to the fact that projecting sentences into a continuous embedding space, it has its own challenges. But some of the methodologies that we applied to try to explore exactly that, right? So how can you essentially control some of the semantic factors that you have encoded in sentences as you would in an image, right? Control some of the factors typically face images, you control if the image has a mustache or hair color. You are now controlling the semantics of the sentence via this entangling mechanisms. That's another strategy that we have been employing in terms of injecting semantic controls interventions. So on the observational side, what we have been experimenting is on the probing side and trying to define some specific properties that we'd like to observe in these inferences and trying to look more into the logical types of inferences that one would expect these models to deliver, semantic logical types of inference. And one work that had been led by Julia is exactly on trying to use probing methodologies to deliver that. So trying to look into transformers and how to make transformers more robust for encoding the reasoning that we would expect in terms of natural logic inference, for example, right? So trying to make these models reason as a reasoner would do. So and methods such as using data sets for augmenting this transformers and specializing this inference of transformers have been applied together with techniques of semantic probing. So really observing what the representations are delivering in the end. So as the final pillar, one recent work that we have been exploring as well, this was led by Eduardo, who gave the previous presentation, is on using metamorphic testing as a mechanism to verify the consistency of this embedding. So looking at really expectations, linguistic expectations and semantic expectations that we have on these models, but not requiring a strict use of ground truth for them. So really trying to explore some consistency properties, but not necessarily requiring manual, massive manual annotations, but trying to do something more in terms of systematic variations of expected linguistic behaviors that we have on this model. So I just planned to give a very brief bird's eye overview on where do we stand in terms of semantic controls. And just to summarize, the aim that we have in the specific project should deliver controlled inference. We are using natural language processing as a field to verify this. So in doing that, we're exploiting the structure, the semantic structure of inferences and of sentences to deliver this level of controls. We are providing declarative solvers that can encode this constraints that can be stated. We are also exploring this entanglement as a mechanism for not only transparency, but also for control. And then on the model behavior side, we're exploring new methodologies for inference probing and metamorphic testing. Thank you for your attention and let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, good. So thank you very much, Andrea, for your talk. We have time here for questions. I cannot see any questions here in the chat, but I have one question. So about the work that are developing on metamorphic testing. So if that approach, so you manage to produce, to increase substantially by a polynomial factor, the number of test cases, right? To check those deep NLP models? And what are the next steps on that research? What do you plan to do next?
So I think what we are planning to explore is essentially the idea of trying to make these models more useful for the broader natural language processing community. So I think we managed in this initial work to prove that the concept makes sense. That's possible to establish that this systematic tasks, which yeah, which will essentially measure this consistency properties. What we want to dialogue is with broader applications scenarios that are more relevant for the natural language processing community. And for that, I think what we need to do is essentially trying to map to some geometric properties of the embeddings and to define this consistence properties in relation to these geometric properties, right? So I think that's the one of the avenues that we can have to make this metamorphic testing framework more useful in the application impact.
Okay, good. Thank you, Andrea. So they have questions from the audience. You can also use the microphone if you want to ask a question for Andrea. No questions? Okay, so yeah, thank you very much, Andrea, for your talk. I'd like to invite now my colleague, Weidong, from the University of Liverpool, is going to talk about safety verification of deep reinforcement learning.
Yep. So thanks, Lucas. Give me a second. Can you see me screen?
Yes, I can see my screen, Weidong.
Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. Thanks, Lucas. I'm going to give a brief talk of our current research. It's a subtopic of the NCOR project, the safety verification of deep reinforcement learning. And my name is Yi and I'm working at the Department of Computer Science at the University of Liverpool. And here is the illustrated graph of the deep reinforcement learning. And we have our robots and the policy, also environment. So the agent is observing the environment and then the policy network will generate to the output based on the states of the agent. And finally, the agent will take that action and to interaction with the environment. So for this scenario, how do we conform or verify the safety of the deep reinforcement learning algorithm? So for us, we separate it into two categories. It's a black box scenario and the white box scenario, which is depends on the knowledge of the deep reinforcement learning. And so first, let's see the difference between verification of the deep neural network and the deep reinforcement learning. For example, the CNN algorithm is a kind of mapping from one to one. For example, we input an image and then we can get the classification of the output. But for the deep reinforcement learning algorithm, the agent needs to interact with the environment to move to the next step until it reaches the terminal state. And the action is based on the accumulated reward. And the environment may change during the runtime. So it is definitely harder to verify the deep reinforcement learning in such a tempest environment. So in the reinforcement learning, the environment may be alone and we don't know how the interaction between the agents and the environment. So we call this scenario as a black box verification. So for this kind of scenario, we design a potential trainee for the deep reinforcement learning algorithm to get more safer, to get safer results as during the right here. The deep reinforcement learning policy can be obtained by the training process. And after that, we do some abstraction to build a DTMC video model. After we check the different property of the DTMC model, we can have the, have an assessment to results of the current policy. And finally, we can retrain the model if the assessment results are not acceptable. And to realize this kind of black box verification, we will meet some technical problems, including how to sanitize the DTMC and how to evaluate the dependability of the deep reinforcement learning policy and how do these properties performs in the deep reinforcement learning algorithm. To answer these questions, we define several different properties and sanitize the DTMC model as shown in the right here. In terms of this DTMC video model, we define several different benign failures from no failure to the catastrophic failure. And after we have the model as a property, we apply the probabilistic model checking tool to verify the deep reinforcement learning policy. And in this scenario, we got some experimental results. We can see that the dependability analysis is sensitive to the sample size. For example, in our experiment, 300 trajectories is enough to build the accurate DTMC model. And also, we found that there are some trade-offs between different properties, which could be applied during the training process and to obtain a safer deep reinforcement learning model. And to evaluate the performance of the deep reinforcement learning model, we define several safety properties. You can see here, the safety is to check the agent can still work or not. And the robustness, it's just the ability to complete the mission regardless of the disturbance. And the resilience evaluates the accumulation deviation from the very safe trajectory. And the detection concerns how fast the robots, the robots can be detected its risk. And the recovery concerns how soon the robots can recover from the risk situation. And here is our simulation and the experiment settings. We have both simulation and the physical environment for our experiment. And for the simulation environment, we use the raws and the example. And the training of the DDPT algorithm is conducted on the miss list with some obstacles, including static and the dynamic objects. And for the physical environment, we assemble to the board three VFRPI as the robot. And we set the laboratory environment and with some objectives, obstacles, okay? And next is about the wide box deep reinforcement learning scenario. It means that we can obtain the information from the neural network and the environment. But here, we still don't know the complete dynamic model of the environment. And for example, the car is driving on the road. And for any specific time, we can predict is the next position of the vehicle. But if somebody is suddenly appear in front of the vehicle, then the car will hit the person, even the even people driving the car, yeah? And that is kind of the, like the sudden case, we can't do nothing to avoid this kind of crash. But if they still have some time and have some distance, then the agent can do the action to avoid this kind of collision. Since the agent is continuous, observes the environment to update the information from the environment. And for this kind of wide box verification, we design a two-level verification framework. The lower level verification is to calculate the reachable set of the different personally policies based on the observation from the environment. And the high level verification is similar to the previous black box verification, since we don't know the completely model of the environment. So we could do the high level dependability verification based on the low level verification results. And this graph here shows the verification idea of our lower level verification in the wide box scenario. And for example, in application, the robot is interacting with the environment based on the sensors. So the red dots here is the sensor signal that we received. But the sensor signals always come with some disturbance and the noise. So we use the green range here to bond the real position range, okay? And based on this, we could calculate the reachable set based on the interval methods. And the purple range here are the reachable set of the next step. Okay. And normally, we have this four situations, which is showing in the left. As the case A is 100% safe, since the real path and the sensor path are safe. And case D is unsafe because both paths are crashed. But for the case B and case C, these two corner cases may cause failure and make some wrong decisions. So here we use the interval methods to bond the real passes around the sensor passes. As shown in the top right here and the green, the real paths are bonded in the green intervals. And if the predicted interval is higher than the safety threshold, then it means the policy is 100% safe for that signal, for that single step, okay? And we can use this interval to measure the safety of the deep reinforcement model, which is kind of like the worst-case analysis. So our method is more conservative, I can see that. So in the experiment, besides the autonomous vehicle in the ground, we add another real application, the BlueAbdo two, on the water vehicle. And this mission is, the mission of this experiment is to save docking into that docking target. It's the cage. And in this experiment, we can predict the next possible state range for every single step. And if the algorithm detects the, the next step will be the unsafe state, then the robot Then the robot will stop there and we can give some uh like a human instruction to avoid this kind of collision. So, okay, uh to now, we still have some uh challenges in the safety verification of different enforcement area. So first is, um we need to refine uh a more accurate D T M C model with less samples. And also, uh our verification tool is facing some uh scalability issues. And it needs lots of time to computation. And and also, there are it's exists the challenge for the different enforcement applications in the online environment. Uh so we are trying to reduce the gap between the known information and the unknown environment in our verification algorithms as well. And so, okay, that's all today's presentation and uh. Uh if you need more detail, please refer to our paper and our GitHub repos. And thanks for your listening and more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so thank, thank very much, uh we uh for your presentation. So do you have questions from the audience?
I have one question, Lucas, in case I can use the voice here.
Yes.
So, thanks, I just like you, I would be curious to know a little bit, what do you plan in terms of next steps, if there is anything planned? In terms of how these models communicate with end users, right? So how keep end users can frame uh the constraints and uh how to facilitate that, right? And how the models can improve their communication of risk? Uh do you have anything uh planned in that direction?
Um and for our next step, uh I think we uh we would like to using some um. So, um. To, sorry, I I think, I think we we uh we haven't to. We haven't to think about that before, so. Um for the next step, we need to reduce next the gap between the uh environment and uh. Like the different uh sensor noise, uh we try to um measure this noise. And try to reflect that in our verification algorithm to reduce that gap. So hopefully, that that's answers your questions.
Thanks, E.
Thank you.
Good, so you have one interesting question from our issue. Um have you settle on D T M C models? Um why?
Oh, okay, uh about the D T M C models, um. Um for example, uh the that is for our like a black box verification. That means we don't know the um any information from the environment and the robots. So we only to uh we uh what what we can do is to sampling, sampling in the uh environment. To test the performance of the different first learning policies. And uh um what's the difference between the D T M C model and the um? These D T M C model and this uh Monte Carlo sampling like that. So it's about the D T M C model, can we can add some like the uh. Uh expert in knowledges to to avoid some uh on accurate results, for example. Um we know that our initial sets are very safe. Because the, for example, the car is in the garage that is safe. And so we can redo, uh we can set that uh transition between the states is zero. So, so tha- that is the why we use the D T M C models.
Okay, um. Yeah, so there is a comment from Maurice, now you have to prove that D T M C is by similar to your system.
So Lucas, uh one comment, if you agree, you can give floor to. To the audience, so they can uh they can directly, yeah, so Mauricio, if you have a question, please uh.
Yeah, just use the microphone.
And address the question, yeah, it would be more interactive.
Efficient, yeah.
Okay, okay, hi, hi, everyone. Uh thanks, Yi, for for a very cool talk. I I was just uh wondering about the, you know, the. D T M C and 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 the challenges with uh what's called, you know, model. Uh uh validation, right? So you have to validate your model is an accurate representation of uh of the system.
And yes, the uh the D T M C and the um the model is kind of equivalent. And uh and that is, um we we have a lot of uh. I I think if the if we do not, we we have nothing information about the from the environment and the. Uh different person in the algorithm, then um construct, construct the D T M C model is the. Uh the only things we can do to verify the different properties. And also that the the like the uh we can uh set of different properties, safety properties. And to verify the different person in the algorithm and using like a the uh property sticker model checking tools.
Yeah, yeah, I I get that, but then you have to, I mean, when do you know whether your D T M C model is accurate enough? That you can use for verification. Uh when do you know whether it's good or bad?
Um, okay, for uh for our uh experiment, I think we we just uh like sampling. And we sample several, a lot of trajectories. And we see that all the uh like the transitions and the properties are converged. So that that is enough to uh for for now, we using this this D T M C model.
Mm hmm. Thanks.
Okay, okay, so that thank, thank very much, Maurice, for the question and also we don't uh for your presentation. So am I gonna uh now invite uh my colleague Mustafa? Uh who's going to give a talk about privacy friendly and conception prediction, uh real case studies? What's up, I can, I can see ice cream, Mustafa? You just need to um put in full presentation mode.
Sorry, my my Zoom just crashed, but I think it's back now.
Okay.
Yeah, I can see a screen.
Yeah, perfect, sorry, sorry for for this. Okay, uh welcome everyone, um so today I'm gonna cover the use case. One of the use cases that we look at the NCO project, that's the energy use case. So this is a joint work uh with University of Leuven. And I also want to especially mention Tony. Because he was the one who did most of the experiments and together with the help of my student James. So let's have a look at the uh closer look at the use case. So the use case was proposed to us by our industrial partner, Urban Chain. So Urban Chain is the startup, University of Manchester startup that um offers a marketplace where. Renewable energies can can be traded. So what they have is they have a peer-to-peer energy exchange system where they uh. Much buyers and sellers who want to trade renewable energy. So in this case, the buyers are the households uh who want to buy energy for a specific trading slot. And the sellers are renewable uh energy generators. So due to the nature of the electricity. The electricity is always traded in advance, which means that. Buyers and sellers, they need to predict how much energy they would need or they can supply at a given uh time slot. So in our case, we are looking at the buyers, we're looking at the households. And we try to predict uh how much energy consumption they would have at specific time slot. So, in in essence, um there is a machine learning model that tries to predict the half hourly consumption data of a household. And that model uses two types of data as input. Um so it's a private data that comes from the households. And the most crucial part of this type of data are the historical uh electricity consumption data. And you could also have information about the number of occupants, type of house, and etc. And you could also use uh some publicly available data for your uh machine learning model. Such as weather forecast or any major events which might affect the energy consumption of households. So let's have a look, have a look a closer look at the daily load profile of a household. So this is a very uh popular and well-known graph. So if you actually plot the daily consumption patterns of um this specific household. You could quite easily uh identify specific patterns that are related to the use of specific devices. So it turns out that if you use um very even simple non-intrusive load monitoring techniques. You could obtain such um many sensitive information about the households. For example, whether at specific time slot the house is occupied or not. Um how many occupants there are, um their activities, habits, um even you could extract information about their medical conditions or region. So what we want to do is, we want to design a machine learning model that is more price friendly. And how to do that? So, in in fact, the federated learning training uh framework fits quite well with our aim. So federated learning models um allow different clients to collaboratively train um. Models without sharing their uh private data. So in a nutshell, uh there is a central server uh that has a global model, this global model is sent to clients. These clients are um use their local data to train the global model, basically they produce uh local models. These are sent to the central server which aggregates them to update the global model and then this process is repeated. So we wanted to test this federated learning in a real case. So we uh found a data set um from Ireland, so the the. So from the trial, which is called smart metering electricity customer behavior trials. So the data set contains more than five thousand houses and businesses electricity consumption data for over eighteen months. So what we did is we developed and tested for uh machine learning models, um D N N, L S T M, C N N, and WaveNet. And we trained them using um first the traditionally traditional machine learning model training, which is centralized. So all the households send their data to the central server, which trains the models based on the data. And produces um, yeah, machine learning models that are um specifically targeted to each of the households. And the other type was um, we trained a global model when using the federated learning framework. Where the household trained their uh the machine learning models collaboratively. So for our experiments, we used as a start, we used thirty households. And we evaluated the performance of these machine learning models uh based on accuracy, scalability, and robustness. So let's have a look at some of the figures for the accuracy. Uh so, because the centrally trained machine learning models. For the thirty households, we actually have um thirty models that 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 are trained specifically for the for each of the households. We were expecting that um these machine learning models will perform better and and provide better accuracy. And that in this indeed was the case. However, um the machine learning models trained in a federated learning um framework actually were not quite far behind. And in fact, the the results, the accuracy results for the WaveNet were pretty, pretty much uh similar. Uh which gives us the conclusion that um, yeah, federated learning. Machine learning models trained via the federated learning uh frameworks. Are actually not that far away from uh from the centrally trained machine learning models in terms of accuracy. And the biggest difference was in terms of training time. So federated models trained using the federated learning model framework were much better in terms of training time. This is due to the fact that in federated uh in the machine learning model trained via the federated learning um framework. We only have a single global model, so we train a single global model. So uh whereas in the centrally trained um framework, we have thirty different models. So this already gives us quite a good advantage in terms of training time. So in terms of scalability, uh in the smart grid community, it's quite common these days. Uh different households to form energy communities and share information. In order to improve their well buil- well uh social welfare. So we tried to mimic that uh energy community setting um by starting with um community with only a single household. And then with each round, uh increasing the number of households who belong to that community. And we tested again the accuracy and the training time um of of the global model trained only by the households belonging to that community. So as you can see, um as the size of the community increases, um the accuracy improves. Um at the same time, also the uh training time, of course, increases. But what we realized is that once we reached how a house, a. A community with with number of households of between eight and ten. Uh we reached a stable um accuracy and then adding more. Hmm household to the energy community actually didn't um improve that much the accuracy of these models. So this is quite uh good news um for the smart grid community. Because one of the barriers, um if we use the central trade model would be that. If a household wants to join an agency community, they need to provide their historical data. And sometimes you actually don't have access to such data, especially if you are a new build house. Um so it turns out that um even a community with um around ten households could train and produce a global model. That is um quite applicable and and gives good enough uh results for any new households who want to join this community. So in terms of robustness, um it's quite common for the smart grids uh community that. Smart meter, smart metering data is not very reliable, so it might be lost. So we decided to um evaluate our models um using damaged data. So what we did is we, from our thirty households, for each of the households, we randomly selected. Twenty-five percent of the consumption data and we just said this to zero mimicking a lost data. And then we we trained the our machine learning models um with the original data and and of course with the damaged data. Um and our results uh show that, of course, there is the because of the damaged data. There is a degradation in the accuracy performance in in both types of machine learning models. The ones that are centrally trained and the ones are trained using the federated learning um framework. However, as you can see, the drop in the accuracy of um. Of the models that are trained in a federated manner is much lower than the drop in. Which in the accuracy of the machine learning models um trained using a central, a centralized framework. And so that gives us the indication that um models trained in a federated uh learning manner. Actually are quite resistant and robust against uh data losses. Um yeah, so looking back at um our our experiments, let's say, and trying to do some privacy analysis. So federates learning, uh the good things about the federate learning is that no client raw data leaves the client side. So this is good, the central uh entity doesn't have, the central server doesn't have access to such uh data. And only the individual client gradients are shared with the central server. So these are the good points. However, um literature has shown us that gradients themselves can also leak information about the raw data, which is not so good. There is also too much trust placed on the central server, so we trust the central server to. Um accurately um to perform the aggregation, which. which not all the time we can assume such cases for the central server. So what we need to do as next steps is we need to protect the gradients too. So some conclusions, so the takeaway messages from experiments are the following. So compared to the machine learning models trained centrally, the ones that are trained using the federated learning framework, they achieve comparable accuracy, which improves scalability and robustness. And the pure application of the federated learning is actually not sufficient to protect client sensitive data. So as next steps, we want to deploy some secure computation techniques to protect the client's gradients. These are examples are homomorphic encryption and multi-party computation. So this would allow the central server actually to perform the aggregation of the locally trained models without having access to the gradients. We want to perform analysis on the larger group of clients, deploy clustering algorithms on gradients to improve accuracy. So instead of having a single global model, we want to have several variants. And the most challenging part probably is to explore the trade-offs between privacy protection and transpareability and explainability and verifiability. So because these are kind of contradicting concepts. And in fact, to help us tackle these challenges ahead, we are actually hiring. So we have an open position for a postdoc in securing privacy preserving AI models. There is one week left until that opening is closed. So please do share with anyone who might, you think it's interested in, in applying. Okay, that's all from my side. Thank you very much.
Good. So thank, thank you very much, Mustafa, for your talk. Do you have questions from the audience? So can you use the microphone to ask the question?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a question for Mustafa. If, like, the contribution in terms of, like, the, the increase in privacy of the distribution of the, the, the reason, the distribution of the data, okay, versus the, those improvements on the, of the model? Security given by the model versus like the distribution given by the federated learning, so?
So I, I, I couldn't get the question.
Oh, okay. So can you return to the previous slide?
Which one?
Uh, the next one. Uh, the, the very last one, I, I think is the very last one.
Okay.
Yes, this one. So, uh, one of the, 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 the next step to say that is, so deploying clustering algorithms on gradients to improve accuracy. But, uh, that's the same thing, since you conclude that the, the pure federated learning is not sufficient to protect the, the sensitive data. There's, uh, how to say, uh, uh, versus, uh, trade-off there between like what you get as protection, okay? Given, but that's what's given by the, the technique itself, okay, that was developed here, versus the distribution of this data among the nodes of the cluster. So how do you weight the contribution by the, the distribution versus the technique itself?
Yeah. So the, so the biggest contribution to the privacy protection comes from the fact that the data is distributed, right? So that's, yeah, that's the first, that's the first point. However, using, if you have access to gradients, they could, you could still somehow reverse engineer them, the model, and then get into the, the data. So?
Say like, uh, the idea is not to have like a centralized model that would leak this information. So, but there is, the, the, the idea here is then to separate the, the model, having this as a distributed model by, so like, or, or on the separate nodes.
So? So you have a global model that is trained from different clients without actually clients sharing the data with each other. And, and we think that we could improve the accuracy of the global model by not having a single global model, but having different versions of the global model, which are based on, you know, clustering the gradients.
Oh, okay, okay. Now, now I understand. So that's what I, I couldn't, couldn't understand this idea, the next step on like distributing the model. Because the model, the, the global model itself would be like the, the weak link introduced. But like how this would be, the, the, the way?
So let's, can I, can I suggest the discussion to continue after the break? Because I think we are now running out, out of time. Okay. So thank, thank you very much, Mustafa, for the talk. Thank you, Danilo, for the question. So our next speaker is Matthias Leschner from ICT Austria. So that's the invited talk of our session. And then he's going to talk about closed-loop safety of Bayesian neural networks and stochastic control systems. So thank you, Matthias, for accepting our invitation. And then I hand over to you.
Okay, thanks, Lucas. Yeah, if I, if you cannot hear me properly or have some problems seeing the screen, please let me know.
I can see.
Okay, perfectly. So, yeah, I'm talking about closed-loop safety of Bayesian neural networks and stochastic control systems. And I mean, this is a safety I workshop, so I'm pretty sure you are familiar with the reasoning of why we need kind of verification, safety verification for machine learning models in the AI systems. And just to remind you, yeah, we have the safety critical applications where kind of physical harm is at risk. And using a black box neural networking systems is quite risky. And you have formal verification of these components would increase the, the trust awareness on, on these systems is required often. My research has recently focused on closed-loop systems, where we have a Bayesian neural, sorry, a neural network policy that interacts with an environment. And this interaction potentially continues forever. And there are two important questions from a verification standpoint that we can ask. The first one is it's safe, which is defined as the system never reaches an unstable state. For instance, in an autonomous car, unsafe could be if you drive against a tree. And yeah, safety means that we never, yeah, experience such a state where we crashed. And stability is the second question that we can ask such a system and which is defined as the system always reaches a certain set of target states. In a car, for instance, when we take a left turn, stability could mean that we always stabilize the center of the lane, right? Which is kind of related to safety, but it could be, for instance, zigzagging around, which could be safe but not stable. And yeah, that could be other definitions. So they're not the same, basically. And yeah, as you probably are familiar in machine learning and AI research, there's a lot of, yeah, research going on. And most of these questions have been already addressed. However, they assume that both the policy and the environment are deterministic. And when we look at this matrix, where we have either deterministic system or stochastic system, and the deterministic policy and stochastic policy, we have this four kind of entries on this matrix. And for systems, it's a natural way to model a system, a stochastic system, right? Because we have some unknown or unobservable noise term, for instance, that X on the system. So it's modeling any system as a stochastic system is quite natural. But you may ask, why do we need a stochastic policy, right? What's the point of this? And this is really important in reinforcement learning. Because in reinforcement learning, we want to sample and perform random actions on the environment in order to generate learning training data, right? To do this policy iteration and improve the policy, we need kind of to produce randomized actions. Why we require stochastic policy? Another important thing that stochastic policy can do is to model uncertainty. For instance, when we have contradictory data or no data at all, stochastic policy, for instance, could learn that, yeah, I, I don't have data on this particular type of the system space or for this type of system space, I have contradictory data. So that's just why intuitively one may need a stochastic policy. And yeah, at least I consider, or it's controversial, but I consider the, the combination of deterministic system and deterministic policy. The question on stability and safety are solved. Yeah, depends on how we define solved. But essentially, there are a lot of function and barrier functions from the control theory, which can be applied to search systems. And in this talk, I will look at two works, two of our recent works on either deterministic system with a stochastic policy or vice versa, deterministic policy with a stochastic system. And depending on timing, I probably won't have time to talk about the JPI work or recent JPI work, but focus on, on this other talk on. And yeah, there's also obviously future work on everything stochastic. So, yeah, I will, I will focus now on this, where we have a deterministic system and a stochastic policy. And stochastic policy is a Bayesian neural network as, yeah, in this, in our paper, Infinite Time Horizon Safety of Bayesian Networks with my colleague, George Shigalish. And yeah, what is a Bayesian neural network? And a Bayesian neural network doesn't have weight values, single weight values for each connection. But each connection is an entire distribution, a random variable. And in the learning process, we don't learn this weight value, but we learn this distribution. For, for instance, if you assume a Gaussian distribution on the weights, we learn the mean and the standard deviation parameters of distribution instead of just the weights. And why we need such a, such, such thing? That's because now if you have such primitive, primitive distributions on the weights and we know our metro is nonlinear and, yeah, can approximate any function, right? We can essentially learn any arbitrary posterior distribution on the output, right? Because now this primitive distributions are mapped to something rather complex on the output. And in our work, so therefore Bayesian neural networks are quite studied and used in, yeah, modeling uncertainties. And in our work, we will look at Gaussian rate distributions and rate allocation functions, which is kind of the common type that is found. Just a note on literature on there, because as I said, AI research is, there's a lot of things going on. And this problem of Bayesian verification has been looked at by using sampling. So essentially, they sample the Bayesian neural network and its neighborhood to obtain some probabilistic guarantees. And also, this has been done for closed-loop systems, where they simulate the Bayesian network with the system for an infinite time horizon to generate kind of trajectory. And then based on this, they also obtain statistical guarantees. The problem here, however, is that the guarantees are only statistical, right? We don't know sure safety. And the second thing is that this only works for finite time horizon. So we can simulate the system forever. We can only say like 10 seconds. And our paper, we try to lift both assumptions. And one side note on the, on this need for sure safety in Bayesian neural networks is because we have, as this weight distributions, Gaussian, which has this infinite support. So this, this is some T-events and because the network is this white linear, it's very likely the T-events are distributed, propagated to the output distribution. Which means that the output distribution is very likely to also have some T-events. And this is very counterintuitive to the definition of safety, where I see, okay, actually, the distribution should only model or the, the state of, sorry, the actions of, of, of safe actions, right? So we, so we basically wanna, wanna remove this. And how are we going to remove this is by recalibrating. So we propose, uh, we phrase the problem as a safe way to compute the set problem. Where we say we want to recalibrate the Bayesian neural network by sampling only from a subset of the entirety of the support of the, of the weights. And we want to verify that as long as we can sample from the safe way set now, we are, we are guaranteed, we, we, safety is guaranteed. And we have two problems, one that looks at feed forward setting, where we have input output constraints and very simple definition of safety. And the second, where we have a closed-loop system, where the policy, the Bayesian neural network policy interacts with the system. So these are two problems. And for solving problem two, we will use the solution of problem one multiple times. So we do invoke this multiple times and some other techniques. And as I mentioned before, we use the rejection sampling to recalibrate the Bayesian neural network to ensure safety. Here's an animation where we have the, the prior distributions on the left-hand side, which kind of are restricted to around, an interval around the means. And as a result, the posterior distribution also removes these T-events of these unsafe actions. Right? It's very unlikely, but possible, but possibly probably the actions on, on that we want to remove, right? So this is really the idea that we want to do with this unsafe, with the safe way sets that we introduce. So the question now is then how to compute such ways, a safe way sets? And as I said, we look at the feed forward setting, where we have input constraints and output constraints on the, on the variables of the network, on the input and output layer. And we just want to check if there exists for a given safe way set as an interval, product of interval. If there exists such, such weight that when you sample this weight and unsatisfied input constraint violates the output constraint. And we showed in the paper that this can be reduced to mixed initial linear programming or S and P solving. And this looks a bit complicated, but essentially there exists mixing issue encodings for standard radio networks, non-deterministic, non-Bayesian. And we basically take these encodings and make small modification to it by instead of having a fixed weight value, we let the weight vary within this safe way sets. So we kind of, yeah, we, we basically make only like minor modifications to existing encodings. But we show that this essentially can now solve our safe way set competition problem for Bayesian neural networks. And the second thing is that for closed-loop systems, which is the more interesting one, where we have this Bayesian policy interacting with environment. And it was big specification looks like that we have given an initial set of states x zero and a set of unsafe states x u. And we want to show that over an infinite time horizon, so when we run this thing forever and start studying in the initial set, we will never reach any unsafe state. And we do this by using positive invariance as a safety certificate. And positive invariance are known in software verification also as inductive invariance, which is an invariant that holds for all system trajectories, starting from the initial set and can be proved by natural induction. And as induction basis, we just showed that the initial set is contained in this invariant. And there's an induction step, we ensure that for each state that is inside the invariant set and for, that for all possible weights from our safe way set that we sample, when we execute the Bayesian neural network and the, and the environment for one step, we are also contained in the invariant, right? So we kind of, the, the system is closed in the, the invariant. The variant is closed under the system, but I mean, restricted to the Bayesian weight, safe way set. And then we just show that the invariant is destroyed from the unsafe states. And this essentially three conditions then concludes that the, the, the system is safe. System restricted Bayesian with the Bayesian restricted to the safe way set, to be correct. The question now is like, how does such a positive invariance set look like, right? Because this is an infinite, potentially infinite set. And how, how do we do this? How would we compute this and represent it efficiently? And our idea is to represent this as a neural network, as a second neural network that is deterministic. So no Bayesian in there. And to check whether a state is inside the invariant or not and treat it as a binary classification problem, right? So essentially, the invariant is represented by all states that the network classifies with one. And then we train this network using a loss that we introduce later. And when, when this training process is done, we, we give it to the verifier module that tries to check that this network is indeed invariant, that it all three conditions are satisfied. And if this is not the case, and a complex sample is found by a verifier module, we add this to our training set for the training of the invariant and fine-tune the invariant. And then repeat this process of invoking the verifier module in, in a, in a loop that basically learns and fine-tunes the invariant. And then question is, how do we learn? Like, what, how does the loss look like? And this is the objective, the training objective of the invariant network. It looks scary at first, but it's essentially true. And the first part essentially only says that the initial states should be classified as in the, inside the invariant. And the negative, sorry, the unsafe states should be classified as outside the invariant. So this is basically normal classification loss with the initial set and the unsafe states. And the second condition essentially is corresponding to the, to the induction step condition of our positive invariant. We see that for system state x and its successor state x prime, if x is classified as inside the variant, then the successor state x prime should also be classified as inside the invariant. Yes, as I mentioned before, then the, this kind of loss system optimized by the training process. And when the training is done, we call the And when the training is done, we call the verifier, which then checks these three conditions. If if the three conditions hold for the for the invariant network. The first is that the initial state is completely contained in the variant. Second is that the unsafe state is destroyed from the invariant. Which can be done with mixed initial linear programming standard, no requirement of our Bayesian encoding necessary. Only the induction step condition here, we need our Bayesian neural network encoding from before. Where we essentially say that for for states x that are in the variant. And if all samples of the weights from this safe way sets, the successor state is also in the in the invariant. Then we all tested this on the experiments, because one thing that you may noticed. Or maybe let me first talk about the experiments a bit. Yeah, so we here we have the independent task, which is a standard reinforcement benchmark and with the vector field. And green and red arrows indicate whether a sample of safety, so not true safety, but just as an estimate of safety is satisfied here or is given here. And when we try to learn in variant network. We found a complex example, I will, just one second, we we found a complex example. Here, where we leave the invariant and then we invoke our algorithm multiple times, five iterations. With more context samples until no more, until the invariant condition is satisfied. Yeah, there's also some more benchmarks and it just shows that this safe way sets that we compute are actually realistic size, so that one or two standard deviations. So it's not very small, because it could be one of the problems of our method, but the safe way sets are kind of reasonable. Yeah, just a conclusion, I think we reached our time limit. And maybe Lucas, if there are questions or.
Yeah, so thank you very much, Matthias, for for your talk. So I think I have time for one or two questions for Matthias.
Matthias, this is Mauricio. Hi, thanks for your talk. So how can I trust the invariant I learn? I mean, why, what's kind of the, why should I trust it?
Yeah, we have in the verification step, we actually show that the variant is the variant is never left, right? So if I go, sorry, back, that essentially we will never leave, it's 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 true, using this, using this extension encoding that we have. That there exists no system, as long as we sample from the safe way set, that doesn't exist a transition that leaves this invariant, right?
And but you're still finding counterexamples, right? And you're modifying the invariant you're learning.
Yes, until we repeat this process, until no more complex example is found, until essentially the 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 problem becomes unsatisfied with the.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. So there is a fixed point for for this process where. Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, much as I think my my comments also related to Maurice, so it looks like very similar to SEGIS, right? The complex sample guided addictive seat is right, what are doing with the learner and verify, right?
Yes, exactly, so it's kind of inspired by that also.
By SEGIS.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So do we have further questions for Matthias? No, so thank you very much, Matthias, for your presentation. So that was the last talk of the INCOR special session, so you are running out of time. Four minutes have exceeded four minutes of our slot, so I'm gonna hand over to Gabriel.
It's fine, I think it has been a very interesting sequel of presentations, so thank you very much to the INCOR team, let's say. For accepting the invitation and for the quality of the presentations. I think that you can take also time during the break to discuss with the audience, if they have questions, they they want to discuss with you. So take time to to do so, okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Gabriel, so do you create a breakout room for this session?
Yeah, I think that we are gonna take, let's say, twenty-five minutes break. So let's meet again in twenty in twenty-five minutes from now. So it could be.